Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call our study session to order tonight. First on the agenda, we have Public Act 202.
Ms. Chair, I guess to start off, we received this in email form. And I tried to read through it, and it kind of went over my head. So I stopped reading it so I wouldn't get confused and figured that we would have people here to give us an overview of this and what it means and how we go about doing it. So I'm going to call on the administration to get us started here, if you don't mind.
The Public Act 202. Martin is going to make the presentation. A real quick executive summary is that we have no idea as to whether or not the state will approve our plan. It's a very good plan. It's actuarially anchored. So a lot of the data that you received is data that we authorized, the council authorized last week. So we didn't get the data to support. But the key is, the actuary said that, and how we devised this, is we would assume that we would continue on a pay-as-you-go basis. But at the same time, the state is requiring us to be at 40 percent funding within 30 years for health care. So the actuaries said, we'll assume you're going to continue your pay-as-you-go, and then we'll tell you what you need to put in a trust. And it'll be two different trusts, one for police and fire, and one for everybody else. And that's what they did. So they'll take you through, but basically, the number is $1.5 million contribution. $1 million would come from, for police and fire, would be in Public Act, or would be in the Act 345 milledage. You know how much to get to $1 million? How much of a mill that is?
I was going to ask John, and I forgot to ask John Riley.
Oh, John, how much to get $1 million?
It's a little under $1 mill.
Okay, so $1 mill. And what you will be asked to do is to make the commitment, and we received a legal opinion that says we can fund police and fire through Act 345 milledage, the legacy portion. We had to get that clarified. And so that would be, next spring, you would add $1 mill to the funding, and that would go for police and fire. For the general government, it's a half a million. I believe that that can be taken out of current operations, because the audit we received last week, we added $2 million to fund balance. And so a half a million is extremely doable and viable. So, and we're at our taxing milledage limit, so we really couldn't go for more taxes. But it means we don't have to cut. We can go ahead. So that's kind of the overview.
Councilman Muscat.
So you're saying that, plus this, we have to keep funding every year into this trust?
Yes.
So it's going to cost us $1.5 billion?
Yep, a year.
A year total?
Yes.
That'd be total, $1.5 million. $1 million coming from Act 345.
And that would go into police and fire trust, and we cannot commingle police and fire versus non-police and fire.
That part I understand. So the controversy this year, obviously, was 3.1 million versus the 8.5 million that we had. There was a little controversy that the actuary said $3.1 million, and then it came out the eighth, because of the health care costs and all of that. We had that little controversy earlier this year.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Well, whatever. And that was all resolved, okay? So it takes us $5 million a year for health care to go into that fund for the police and fire?
No, $1 million. $1 million?
No, I'm talking about in general, the Act 345 this past year.
Oh, in total, yeah.
In total, it was $8.5 million, 3.1 for...
But that also includes pension.
Well, that's, okay, so pension, but we're just talking health care now. Okay, I just want to make that clear, that it's going to be $1 million for health care for the retirees.
And it would be the same $1 million going forward every year. So once the increase happened this year, it wouldn't be like another million, but it would be, that milledage would stay at, to get us an additional million.
Okay.
Now, you should be aware that these numbers are going to fluctuate as we, like, five years from now, it may not be $1 million. One of the things, I'm actually giving Martin's presentation, but one of the things that's important is the state gave us what the assumption should be. So that was baked into the actuary. So one of the things you're going to find out is that the audit was done on a Gatsby 75 basis. And that was, you remember that number, 169 million that's in there? Okay, using the state assumptions, which we have to use for this report, the liability dropped to 111 million. And so you can see that, based upon what you make assumptions, you can really change the liability rather dramatically. But the state told us what we had to use. And so these numbers that the actuary presented are based upon the state numbers.
How did it drop so much?
Because of the assumptions. So if you, for instance, like, if you assume that you're going to earn 7 percent interest on earnings versus a different number, that reduces it, because you're going to be earning more money. But the state told us we had to use, the actuary had to use something.
I'm glad that we only have to use that.
Okay, at this point, we're going to hear from Councilman Abdallah, then we're going to go on with the presentation.
So then, let's go ahead with the presentation. I'll ask my question at the end, in case you cover it.
Take that much time.
Thank you.
Before Martin begins, just to be clear, he's going to reference the handout that you were passed out tonight, so not necessarily...
Yes, take whatever you need and pass it to him.
...refer to. So the difference between the email that you received and tonight's version, this includes the actuarial backup and all the numbers. So these are the firmer numbers.
Sure. I believe you have the response, the corrective action plan in front of you, that's supposed to be submitted to the state. My focus was going to be on that. I do have some comments, so that I'm going to go back to with the Nythart valuation. So in summary, the mayor is correct. The liability did decrease drastically as a result of using the state assumptions. So we met with Nythart actuaries yesterday, talked over the overall liability and where we're at right now, in order to be able to submit the corrective action plan. So the liability was about $169 million for the financial statement purposes. And there's a lot of different dates that are used. That liability was as of, I believe, 12/31/17. So $169 million. Changing some of the given that were required by the state, changing some of the timing, the liability drops to $111 million. Again, that's the best estimate as of right now, so that liability can fluctuate year over year. If the state changes some of the requirements of the discount rates to be used, rates of return, things like that, that liability can change year over year. Again, unfortunately, there's a lot of moving parts that are going to be expected over the future years. If the overall benefits are changed for future retirees, or for future employees, or anything like that, again, that plays a role in the liability as well. So there's a lot of moving parts. As of right now, the actuary was looking at calculations for what does the city need to do in order to get to the 40 percent funding in 30 years? So that's the mandate by the state. In order to get to that 30 years, or 40 percent in 30 years, what does the city need to do to get us there? So step one's going to be, set up the trust funds. The two trusts will need to be kept separate because of the Act 345 milledage. One's going to be for police and fire, and one's going to be for all other employees. So keeping those separate. The $1.5 million the actuary was suggesting, they included a calculation overall in the report that basically said, if you pay as you go, just like you've been doing over the past, and then you pay an additional $1.5 million, that actually goes into the trust fund, so you're going to be pre-funding some of those liabilities that are going to be coming due in the future. That $1.5 million is going to build up over a 30-year period, including investment returns that are projected right now. Over that 30-year period, you're going to get to approximately 41 percent funded level. This is going to get you where you need to be, based on the liability right now. If, five years from now, that liability of $111 million changes to $100 million, you don't have to fund it quite as much for the prepayment. If it changes to $120 million, you might have to put a little bit more in. It depends also on the rates of return. If investments are doing better than the projected, I believe it's 7 percent. That's in the actuary report. If it ends up being 9 percent, you won't have to necessarily fund as much. If it's a little bit lower, again, you'll have to make up the difference in order to get to that 40 percent. But it's your best estimate right now that the state requires in order to be able to approve the corrective action plan.
Now, this hasn't been approved by the state yet, right?
Correct.
It's been submitted. You'll have it on your agenda, and you'll give us authorization to submit it, and then we'll see if the state agrees, or we'll have suggestions for us. But that was one of the reasons we wanted to use Plant Moran, because they're doing other communities, and they have seen what has been submitted. So we got the benefit of some of the other communities that they're working with, and we're able to draw, they drew on some of those to include in our particular proposal, and hopefully, the state will accept it.
Hopefully. The one comment I do have to make is, the state has been rejecting a lot of the plans. A lot of times, they require additional information. They do give an additional 45-day period after their review in order to be able to resubmit another proposal for the corrective action plan. So even if it's rejected, it doesn't mean, you know, kind of gloom is upon us or anything like that. It's just a matter of explaining some of the items and some of the assumptions that had been made in order to be able to get to that 40 percent.
So if they don't accept it, we have 45 days to resubmit it?
Correct.
And at that point, if they don't accept that one, what happens?
It's basically back and forth, the same thing.
Yeah, there's no...
So you negotiate back and forth, basically?
What happened, I found out that when the legislation was adopted, and the legislation came from a task force that Governor Snyder appointed, there were union people, there were management people, in fact, I think there was the firefighter from the state office that was one of the members. So they came up with a recommendation for the legislature. The legislature did not include in the legislation any penalties. They originally had a penalty provision, but that did not get included. So quite frankly, there's no teeth behind the particular act, but we're trying, as a community, to go along with, in the spirit of the law, and try to accomplish it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Muscat?
Well, Councilor Abdallah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Abdallah?
So a couple of questions, Martin. First of all, how long have we been in this particular type of situation, where we're behind like that? And then the secondary question, 1A, is, how many cities do you know, that, you know, for approximation, or even percentage, that are in a pay-as-you-go program? Because it seems like a lot of them are, from some of the minimal research that I've done on this, there's a lot of them that do it, you know, in a pay-as-you-go type of system. If you could answer those questions for me first, then I have another question. Well, the last question is, our health care costs right now for police and general government, how much is that per year?
So the cost itself, I don't remember offhand, if I can...
Around $9 million.
$9 million.
Just under $10, for everybody. It's a big expense.
That's with retirement and all?
Retirement.
So I believe question one was, I guess...
How long we've been in this type of a...
So the pay-as-you-go has been as long as...
I'm talking about for Dearborn Heights specifically.
No, Dearborn Heights.
Pretty much as long, so you've never pre-funded the liability?
Okay.
Technically. So there's communities out there, and I don't know the exact percentages, there are communities out there that have been doing the actuarial recommended contributions. So what that means is, you'll essentially pay as you go, plus you put a little bit of money aside every year to keep growing that fund, just like you've done with the pension system, in order to get to the funded level 20, 30, 40 years from now. The OPEB never had that requirement here, or anywhere else in the state. So some people did it, some communities did it, some communities did not.
Voluntarily.
It was purely voluntary. Some communities, so like for pension, it's required. So every community has been funded, and if you're not funding the actuarial required contribution, then it needs to be reported to the state, and there's other penalties and things like that. From the OPEB, there's never been such a law, such a rule, and there still is not. So a lot of the terms were basically used for both pension and OPEB. The ARC, the annual required contribution, was also used for OPEB, which is not accurate, because it was always more of a recommended, recommendation versus a requirement, which is going to change going forward. However, it's not really a requirement, so that's why the city never really funded before. It could have been just availability of funds, could have been a lot of different factors, but the city never pre-funded the liability. As a percentage for other communities that have not pre-funded, I don't know the exact, I know that I have, my communities, I would say probably about...
Would you say it's more common than uncommon?
Well, the communities that I work with closely, I would say 20 percent or so are fully funded, which is pretty much unheard of. One community doesn't even have OPEB, because it doesn't offer it to the retirees. And I would say the other two are kind of split. Some are pay-as-you-go, the other half are probably between 30 and 50 percent funded. So it kind of ranges all across the board. So Dearborn Heights is definitely not unique from the perspective that you've done...
That's where I was going with this. Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilman Muscat?
Well, I know Dearborn has been contributing annually to it. That's one of the cities, and that's about the only one I know.
They put out for bond now.
Well, then they put out for bond, but they had quite a bit of money in it already. But question, some of the employee, and I don't know if police and fire are included in it, what happens when a person turns 65 and they go on Medicare? Doesn't that reduce any of the burden?
So it depends on the contract itself, and depends on the employee. So I believe there are reductions, because it, basically, the liability decreases. If you do the extra coverage, it's only a couple hundred dollars a month versus the full...
Correct. So what I'm saying is, we got employees that turn 65, and I don't know if the police and fire are in that. Medicare should, is going to help us.
It does. Medicare advantage, and some of the drug costs as well.
Okay, so that, over the year, for the next, God knows how many years?
Yeah, that's one of the premiums that decreased in this...
So that's going to help us as the years go by also?
Yeah, so in the narrative, they'll say there was a premium decrease, that was related to the...
Okay, you know, I've always thought about that, you know, about...
So they have A and B, and that they're recorded to have, and C comes out of their social security check, and then the supplemental Medicare advantage plan, which picks up the other pieces, including the drug portion, that's covered by the city's...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the municipal stability board, their corrective action plan development, best practices and strategies, I imagine, that's incorporated into the action plan that we're looking at. My question, and you mentioned it, Councilman Muscat, about the Medicare as primary insurance for retirees 65 and older. Also, it mentions to implement a cap on employer-retiree health care cost, raising the eligibility age for retiree health care. And there's several other points here on page three. Can you speak to that, some of those items? Or do you want me to continue?
Well, if it comes to the contracts that are in place currently by the city, I would have to defer to the HR director for, like, what items have been implemented at the city. I know some have. I don't know if all of those items are in the contracts.
No, everything's negotiable. The emphasis on these particular contracts was to get everybody in basically the same health care plan, and that was the recommendation from your unit that, and we worked very hard. In fact, Elizabeth probably would not want to go through those meetings again. I know that those I sat in on, when you deal with health care, employees start to shake in retirees. And so we incorporated into the contracts, but, you know, we're getting mis-signal here. I've had people on the council come up and say, we're union people, we don't believe, and I philosophically believe that we should be providing health care and pensions and those legacy costs to our employees. And so I don't have a problem with it. But when we get negotiations, some of those things are complete deal breakers, that we cannot force on union members some of those items that you're indicating. And so we have been working in the direction of significant savings, but it's got to be a mutual thing with the union and the city.
Okay, Councilman Bazey?
I guess, I don't want to ask the wrong question, or the way I'm, let's see, the best way to ask that question. Okay, so for the unfunded liabilities, you have some employees that work for the city, been retired, they're back to working for the city. So if they're not paying into that, so that's going to increase our unfunded liability. Is that correct?
So I...
No, you only get one health care.
You get one health care.
So I guess my question is, if you get one health care, what happens with the ones, okay, so you have one employee working who's been retired and collects their pension or health care. Now, are they paying into their retirement fund?
There is a mat.
Yeah, so the contribution off of a pension that deferred, or that gets allocated to health care, that is, that happens, right? So that's automatically deducted on the pension check. So in that particular case, that is happening where the individual has retired, the pension check has started, there is an amount that then gets forwarded to offset the premium costs, so to speak.
So the saving is, if someone retires, we bring them back, we're just paying them a salary. The health care, they don't get anything extra, and so consequently, we save money, because we're only providing one health care for a retiree and an employee, and not two.
But still, if you would have hired somebody else other than the one who retires, they'll be paying into that fund. Is that correct?
No. No, so, yes, the new employee would pay something, but the city would still be paying an additional, for an additional person.
Very significant.
And, yeah, it would, you know, it'd be up into the hard cap, so approximately $20,000 if they were a family plan.
Okay, any other questions? Councilman Wenzel?
If the state accepts this plan, and we're committed to contribute into the trust a million and a half, is that something that we definitely have to do every year, regardless?
The state will monitor that. So for the first 24 months, they'll make sure that you're on plan. At least it says right now, for the first 24 months. So you do have to stick with the plan, essentially, unless there's a revision to the plan still gaining you to the 40 percent.
Now, we're basing this on a 7 percent return, and you said something about if we don't get 7 percent, we'll have to make it up. What's the plan on making up the difference?
Basically, what would happen is if, let's just say the new rules are, say, 6 percent. The actuary would come up with a new valuation and say, okay, what's the liability at that point, which the liability should be similar? But then, okay, what kind of assets do you have to have in the trust in order to get to that 40 percent funding down the line? So if it's 6 percent return on investment versus 7 percent, that contribution of a million and a half would have to go up in order to make up for that 1 percentage loss, or not loss, but less of an investment return.
How would we make that up, though? I mean, we're already capped out on taxing. I mean, is there a plan for that?
John, do you know what you would do to make up that difference if we don't get the 7 percent? If it goes down to 4 percent, something drastic like that?
I mean, a lot of these are, these are long-term projections, you know? So, yeah, one year, you're going to be down, one year, you're going to be up, and then it's kind of over time, you know, hopefully, you meet your actuary on rate of return. I know with our pension systems, over the life of the plans, we've had returns over 7 percent. But if you look at it over seven years, it may be slightly below. And so I don't know how often it requires an actuarial evaluation to be done in this, you know? For the pensions, we do a funding evaluation each year. So each year, they look, I don't know if, will it require some evaluation yearly, or...
I believe it does five years.
It's every five years.
Yes.
So I don't think we would be set for a million five for five years, and then there would be some type of evaluation done that we then look at, understanding at that point. And on the pension side, like I said, we do that funding annually, and then the city makes the contribution.
Yeah, well, I guess my question was, you know, is there a plan, how are you going to make that up, that money? Am I missing something, as far as how we're going to make that extra, say, if we need an extra half a million? I mean, it just comes from increased taxes, or...
Was it a million and a half?
Yeah.
Well, they've explained that, so $1 million of it, it sounds like it's going to come from the Act 345 milledage. And then, you know, the half a million is going to come from the general operations. And then you do have the $2 million that you guys have kind of somewhat earmarked, and that partially, you know, you could tap into to help make that $500,000 contribution that isn't part of the 345 milledage.
Right. I would think that $2 million should go in immediately.
Well, I disagree, essentially, because what you're doing, you're handcuffing yourself unneedably, and you're going to take, you know, cash flow that we could use possibly for other operations out of our hands, and then we possibly could push us back into the borrowing situation. And so if you kind of say, well, you know, we're going to use, you know, $250,000 from that, and $250,000 from our current operations, and then, you know, let us, you know, because otherwise, if you put the $2 million in, again, when we get to June 30th, we may not have the cash.
And I totally agree with the treasurer for cash flow purposes. But if we reached a recession, we know we've got $2 million in the bank to help us out. But for cash flow and everything, I think, John, is absolutely 100 percent.
If you look at it that way, it does make sense. I was just, since we had it already earmarked, I said, well, let's just put it in there with $2 million already to the good, but...
And Councilman, to give you an idea, let's say that we assume the 7 percent, which we have to buy what the state's mandating, let's take the $1 million. But we only earn 6 percent? That's a $10,000 difference. So the next year, if we ended up having to put $1 million, $10,000, that's not all that significant, the 1 percent, because that's what we would be saying, we're going to earn 7 percent on the million. And if we only got 6 percent, that's $10,000 difference.
Okay, Councilman Conston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. But this number's going to be going down. Many of our new hires are not getting retiree health care, correct?
That is factored into the actuarial. We made sure that all those numbers were in there. So you're, to the extent that, because not all the unions have that provision in there, and that's something that has to be negotiated, but those that do are already, that's incorporated into the number.
Like General Motors, when General Motors said, I think it was pre-bankruptcy, no more retiree health care.
We didn't put any, we, I don't think the state was looking for, okay, Dearborn Heights, you know, you could put in there and change the number drastically and say, we're only going to provide health care for the first 25 years. Well, nothing's negotiated. The state did not want you to put in some kind of assumption that has to be negotiated, has to, it could or could not come. So we dealt with, they took the contracts as we have now, and that's what the actuary worked with. And Elizabeth spent a lot of time making sure that that was accurate.
But retiring early, excuse me, but retiring early kind of puts more of a burden on us, correct? When people retire early. So if people retire at 45, 50, that puts a heck of a burden on the system, correct?
Well, let's look at it from two standpoints, because this did come up in our discussions. The assumption in this plan is, I think we have 243 employees? So we assume we're going to stay at 243. However, one way to reduce your liability is contract out and not hire replacement people.
No, but again, what I'm saying is, the people that you have now, and people buying seniority, you buy five, six years' worth of seniority, or whatever we allow, and people start retiring at 49 and 45 instead of retiring at 62 or 60, our liability, our, goes way up, doesn't it? Does it not when people retire early?
Only if you replace.
But you're still drawing out of the fund earlier than someone would be if they were continuously working. So regardless... So regardless, you're still going to be paying out more for someone at, retiring at 45 as of to 62 or 65, because most people in the world retire after X amount of years of service, like, say, 30 years, and you're, you're probably in your 50s or your 60s. It's that when you're able to buy five extra years seniority and retire five years before you normally would, you're putting five years' stress on that plan.
If the younger person, see, the older person, their healthcare is more expensive.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. You're still retiring before your retirement age that you normally would retire. So if I retired at 45 with full benefits, as if I retired as I was 55 at full benefits, that's 10 years' worth that I'm, I'm drawing out of it, which increases your liability.
Assuming the person doesn't go out and get another job and work somewhere else, which is still liable.
Even though, even though, they get another insurance fund, they're still covered under ours.
Here, here's the thing you're missing. There's a vesting, and if the person matches, achieves the vesting period and is qualified to leave, I don't think you can leave at 45, can you, John, in the pension?
You'll find out.
Yeah, I mean, as early as 40 as you could, you know, in the police system, because some of them can buy, I think, five years, and, you know, it's 25 and out, so they work there 20 years, and they get out of college 18, 22, you know, so...
Okay. If, but what I'm saying is, if they reach that vesting period, we're going to provide that healthcare for as long as they live. So let's assume the person lives to 90, and if they leave now, we're committed to 90. If they leave at 62, but we're still paying as an employee, what happens is...
But if they're retired at 45, you're not, it's going to come out of a, you're not, you know, it's coming out of, out of the retirement fund instead of their, they're paying, they're paying in, they're still paying in when they're working.
If I can add...
They're paying in when they retire.
So the retirement fund technically doesn't pay the healthcare costs because there is no retirement fund, quote unquote? The pension would, but the retirement fund would, for the OPEB would not. So right now, you have zero in the trust. So you're on a pay-as-you-go. So if somebody retires today versus five years from now, no matter what, you're paying their healthcare, if they're an employee or they're retired. So from that perspective, it's cash neutral unless the city hires a replacement employee. If the city hires a replacement employee, now you're paying the retiree who he or she retired early, let's just say, and then you're also paying someone else's healthcare that you just hired a replacement. Now, if the replacement employee doesn't qualify for healthcare or you didn't replace the retiree, technically, the city is not out any cash from that perspective.
Okay, Councilwoman Hitz Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to go back to Act 345, which is our police and fire pension part of the retiree system, where healthcare is a separate piece and needs to be duly noted and recorded under a trust fund, 115, I believe it is. But Treasurer Riley, did you, you talked about cash flow. I'm sure you weren't referring to interfund loans from that fund, am I correct? Did I miss it? Okay.
No, those ones are not allowed to, I mean, we're not allowed to borrow from the pension fund.
Absolutely, yes. They're restricted, yes.
When I come to this council, you know, we asked to borrow from the water fund, we've asked to borrow from the library. In the past, we've done loans between TIPA, but there is no borrowing from the pension fund.
Right, I wanted to make sure, because that is a restricted fund, as we all know, and of course, the Public Act 345, as well as, there's more, Act Number 314 of 1965, is very restrictive on how that money can be invested and how it's used and can be used. I just wanted to make sure that was accurately reported and clarified here. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah?
Martin, I just want to see, from your perspective, obviously, you guys are experts in this particular field, way beyond what we have. What concerns do you have about the direction we're going with this? There have to be some concerns.
There are, so the one and a half million dollars, in my opinion, it's necessary to get to that 40%. So that's, that's a given, essentially based on the numbers from the actuary. My concern would be managing the liability down the road. So right now, it's 111 million dollars. Making sure that the city makes the right adjustments for future hirings, future benefits, things like that, in order to make sure that that liability doesn't increase exponentially over the years. Because as people live longer, which is a wonderful thing, but as people live longer, that liability's going to keep going up. Right now, there's an assumption of individuals living so many years, now if all of a sudden everybody lives five years longer, well, that liability exponentially increases.
That's what I was talking about when you retire early, because your liability changes. People retire early, I mean, that's basically what I just said.
From that perspective, yes, the, to answer that, you're still providing healthcare for a certain period of time. You're still providing healthcare up to the point that the person dies. So if the person retires early, it's still, the healthcare is still provided over the same exact amount of time. It's only if, instead of 90 years old, the person passes at 95, then you're extending the payment term over an extra five years. But the initial start, whether the individual retires at 50 or 60, they're still collecting healthcare between 50 and 60, whether they're working at the city or they're not.
How does the healthcare differ for a retiree as an active employee? Is there any difference to it at all?
I don't believe so. I could be wrong, but I don't believe so.
Our healthcare right now has no difference for a retiree than an active employee.
So it depends on which contract, where you are, what age you are, if you're Medicare eligible. So there are some nuances in terms of how the plans are used, if you're pre-Medicare versus post-Medicare, absolutely. There are contribution increases for those of us who are active employees subject to PA 152. We pay based on what plan we buy. There are some difference co-pays, depending upon which retiree you are. Now, in many of the new contracts and the direction that we've gone, is that what active employees get is pretty much what retirees will have a pick from.
But it's pretty much, so, you know, it's got to be, to not have more liability has to be exactly the same. But when you're telling me here or there, there's liability that increases when you retire. Okay? So it's got to be the exact same thing. You can't say, I got a dime here and a quarter here, and they're the same. They're not. It's different.
The, if you have a certain thought, you can express it, but let me tell you where...
And I guess this is for a different time and place, and I understand that.
Where, where you come into, in my estimation, additional costs, because I've looked at all this when we, when we went through and needed to get people to retire early, a person who retires before they are Medicaid...
Medicare.
Medicare eligible, that's where there is a cost, a significant cost differential. But when you get to the, when they become qualified for the federal programs, there's a drop-off.
And that's what I've been saying all along.
So very agreement.
So, yeah, but when people retire early, that's, that hurts.
Well, between the early retirement age until they qualify for the, for the plans.
Yes. So if people retire at 45, and then we go 10, 12, 15 years, there's a, there's a difference there, and that's all I wanted to say, and there is a difference.
It's only affecting the pension plan, not the healthcare.
Not pension, no, not pension.
No, just healthcare.
Healthcare.
And this is what we're after, is cutting our expenses for healthcare. Okay? So retiring early, when you buy service, does hurt us. It has to. It has to hurt you. When you retire at 45 or 49 versus 62, you do hurt that fund.
Yeah, corporations can't do that, because they can't survive if they do what we do.
Okay, so it does hurt. So just a point that I was making...
And further on that point, if you replace a person, then I, I would totally agree with you. If you do not replace a person and they've already vested, you have that liability anyway.
And that may be true. I'm not going to, I think that's for a different time and place to discuss, but it's, it's there.
If I can just add, for police and fire, there is a sinew, right, in terms of when they're eligible to retire and...
They can't hear you.
And what's too long, you know, what's too long, because certain things could end up ending a worker's comp injury, where then the city would end up paying as well, actually even some higher costs if there were injuries. So some of those earlier retirements, those are related to police and fire, and that's because, you know, it's, it's a very physically demanding job, and maybe those folks want to be 60 or 65 years.
I gotta, I gotta take police and fire away from this whole scenario and leave them on the side here, since they're something a little bit different.
But that's the majority of younger retirees.
Police and fire are not, in my opinion, when I'm speaking of this, are not about police and fire. It's just a general government employees other than police and fire, which is, I think, is something different.
They're the majority of the pre-65 retirees.
Well, I understand that. That I understand.
Elizabeth? Well, you know, we've been talking about not, not replacing someone that retires. How many times do we, someone retire and they don't get replaced?
Very often.
Really? Like, what kind of situation?
We had over...
We have eight vacancies right now, you know, we don't even have as many field training officers to replace those folks for, like, new hires to please. So in a few weeks, I'll be sending you an email that we're going to hire two more, but we have eight openings right now.
That's, that's not intentional, that's because you can't hire them, right?
No, it's because the, you know, the timing of things, there's vacancies, and there have been positions that haven't been replaced.
We had well over, we're close to 350 employees, we're down to 243, and we use these plans to reduce the amount of employees.
Bill Deckard's retirement is an example.
Yeah, a lot of them. We had to bring down the amount of headcount in order to keep the ship afloat, if you will.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
So this will be on the agenda, and next, can you say we would hope you would authorize, allow, who else is assigned besides me? The council has to do a motion, am I not correct?
Yes, and then we just need the documentation, we just come from the clerk's office, show, noting the motion, and then...
Correct. If I have any more questions, am I free to call you?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman Abdullah?
I mean, it's, okay, I know it's going to be on the agenda, but we were just given this stuff right here just today, so...
Yeah.
Provided there's no new issues or concerns in this, because obviously, there's no way we could read this in five minutes, so...
Correct, and understand.
Was this all part of the, just the application only that was sent to the state?
So the first, I believe the whole package is going to be sent to the state.
And I don't know what's in there, because it was given up.
The first six or seven pages are the response to corrective action plan, and then the subsequent pages are support, which primarily is the actuarial report, which is like 40 pages or something like that.
I'm just being, you know, transparent, just provided there's nothing in here that changes our mind. Because, and that's why we prefer to get it ahead of time, you know, preferably.
Yeah, it would have helped a lot.
So the actuarial report came in last night.
But I'm saying, there's a lot of other stuff in here in addition to the actuarial report.
Yeah, everything else unfortunately is driven off that.
Okay, I understand.
But we could have got it yesterday, too.
I understand, but I'm just saying, on our end, you know...
Yeah, so I, you know, Mark...
And then even if, I'm sorry to interrupt.
...on the draft all day, if we add anything, I think it was 1.5 million dollars per words per year.
But here's the problem, Elizabeth, even if we start to go over this tomorrow, then the city's closed Friday, then Saturday, Sunday closed, you know what I mean?
Send an email.
So...
Here are my number.
Okay.
And Nihart, we have their number, too.
Okay.
The other question that comes to my mind is, once we found out about, we had to report this to the state, and that's been months ago, I mean, months ago.
Since April.
I can't, I'm not saying this to be mean or whatnot. Why wasn't this done at least a month ago? I mean, I remember Dearborn doing something a month, month and a half ago.
With regards to this, it's been very challenging. We talked about last week the audit. The Gatsby 75 number was tweaked significantly based on the rates that came in in September, October, which are effective for January, because we had a fundamental shift of our healthcare plans for active employees in 2018. It was such a shift that it actually changed our rates significantly, like for the better, you know, for the better for the city and actually for the employee. We then asked Nihart to incorporate those new rates that they were given. They were given the data, you're correct, May, we knew we needed this. We had to wait till June 30th to provide Nihart our actuarial for the healthcare, the most current data with regards to our employee pool. As Mr. Wenzel pointed out, we're hiring people every month. We wanted to give them a good number to start. Then, in September, October, when the rates came in even lower, we said, this is worth looking at. We forwarded to Nihart, we worked at it. Then, we really looked at the payments, every payment that we paid for retiree healthcare, because that was very much on your radar, on our auditor's radar. So one Friday, we hashed it all out, we worked with Nihart, and then Monday morning, an auditor came back in, we made sure the solid number, and they, they redid their model. And then, we got a draft, we went through it again. You'll see the final copy for the Gatsby was signed yesterday, because we had gotten a draft that we used to run, and that was good. And then, we needed that number in order to do, figure out the 1.5 number, so we needed that 165 million number to get to the next model. And so, it's been a domino effect, you know, some of it, if we would have ran with the original numbers, it would have been a lot higher, and the contribution would have been more, higher, I believe, and it would have taxed the residents more.
I guess what I, you know, in the whole process, I see this whole thing right here that needs to be read, and I don't know if I could read it all and comprehend it all. I guess I'm saying that we have to trust you people, that this is the best possible plan for us to vote on, because now, you know, in a week, I gotta, I gotta say yea or nay. And it's very difficult for me to do that, and it may have been difficult for me to do it if I had a month and a half. I, I don't know, I'm just, but the more time that someone has a chance to read and be able to call and, and ask questions is always better.
It's difficult, and Gatsby 75 was new to us, to the age of Dearborn Heights this year, so it was even more challenging. It's been an educational process, and even with our actuaries, and especially with a lot of the contract changes, we had a lot of work to do.
And saying so, it's like that for everyone in the state.
Yeah, and Martin, I think yours, 415, we had a conference call with the actuary down in Indianapolis. That was the first real opportunity I had to look at all these particular numbers, and so I spent most of the morning and last night and took this thing with me to lunch to try to understand, but I, the big thing that I was happy about, I was afraid we were going to have, we were going to come back and talk about three or four million dollars, and then that would have had a particularly hard influence on the community and the taxpayers. So when the number came in significantly less, I was very happy, but a lot of the detail is, the difficulty is, unless you have a very strong statistical and financial background, I don't think you can look at those details, a common person would really understand them.
Yeah, and Nihart offers us the opportunity, they are in Indianapolis, but we can schedule a study session where he can come in, he has come in, he being Randy Goffman as the lead actuary, he and his assistant can come in, do a presentation, we just had to work out, because obviously, business travel.
Well, we can't do it between now and...
No, no, that's not...
If I can...
Okay, well, at this point, we're about done.
If I can say just one thing from the perspective, if you do have any follow-up questions, feel free to give me a call or email me, I'm definitely available anytime you need me. One comment, as far as the plan itself, the corrective action plan, basically, in a nutshell, it's the million and a half per year that the city's going to contribute into a trust. So you need to set up the trusts, trusts, too, for police and fire as well as general, and then you need to start funding it, the million and a half. The actuarial evaluation was performed by Nihart, and basically, what shook out to, in order to get to the 40%, you need to put the 1.5 million dollars per year. That's what the actuary calculated.
Okay.
So the best plan of action is the million and a half as of right now. It might change down the road if it's five years from now, when you get the new actuarial analysis, that number may shift a little bit, but again, it's the best course of action as of right now.
Okay.
Can I ask one question for Martin? Next Tuesday's agenda, we had to put on a deficit elimination plan for CDBG. Could you just briefly, so they're not all shocked, as to why that's on there?
Correct. So last week, when we presented the financial statement audit, the CDBG fund has a deficit of about $4,000, I believe, it's just the timing of when reimbursements were submitted to be paid back to the city and when they were received, so there's... So there's $4,000 more that the city paid that hasn't, the city hasn't received yet. The reimbursement has been submitted, I believe about a week or two ago. So the city is receiving the funds. But essentially, the deficit elimination plan needs to be submitted to the state to say that you've, you're correcting the deficit and that you will have a surplus next year, that you will not be below zero.
Didn't Director Haslam talk about that?
Yeah, but I don't know that it was made clear that the council would need to approve that deficit reduction plan.
No, he didn't make it, but he did say that it was...
No, he did. Yeah, he did. He said that there was an audit and there was no problems. He says, we successfully passed the audit.
Yeah.
And there was nothing mentioned about this.
So the audit you've passed, so when we were performing the financial statement audit, there's no issues with the numbers?
No, I'm sorry, not Plant Moran audit. He said he had somebody come in from the state, from the state, from government, and they did an audit. So how come that was not caught at that time?
So deficit...
Now, your question, I'm sorry. That's the administration question.
Okay.
Because that was, that was the statement that was made to us by the CDBG director, that they actually came in and audited that there was no issues. There was not, nothing mentioned about the deficit. I believe that was about a month and a half ago.
Yeah, so when HUD comes in to perform an audit, it's more of a compliance audit, where they make sure that you've spent the money appropriately, making sure that you've done the correct items as it pertains to the grants received. So technically, it's not financial. So if the fund itself ends up in a negative balance because you've paid more because you haven't asked for those reimbursements yet, it's more of a timing issue. HUD would not catch that from that perspective, because they just wanted to make sure that you're spending money appropriately and that you have the right controls in place to make sure that you're spending money appropriately.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I could just say, we had to show all of our backup for that audit. So all the allocation that comes into the building department and refunds into the ordinance department, that's what that audit was about. We had to show all of our backup of how we tracked.
This is CDBG.
Yeah, no, this is about the CDBG.
Right. We, CDBG...
CDBG funds, though.
They fund staffing in my department and the building department. And that's what that audit was about.
Got it.
We spent weeks helping CDBG get prepared for that audit by making sure we had all the correct documentation for how the dollars were allocated.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, I guess we're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for taking the time. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the cable upgrade discussion. Chrissy, you asked for this on the agenda, is, did you want to start it?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can go up a stand.
Can you come over to this one? Thanks.
Now, while they're walking up there, CM does a fantastic job with her own TV program, and she's very involved with our cable. And I think Bob Ankramp was still here, but we emphasized to all of you that the equipment that we're using, and Stan can verify this, could break at any point, and we would not have any cable TV programming at all. Well, from that concern and the fact that we have, we receive money from the cable companies that is called PEG money, and I can't remember what PEG is an acronym for, but it can only be spent for cable-related activities. And so what we wanted to do was kind of buy equipment, upgrade. And then, CM came, we had a coffee together a few months ago, and she had an idea that would really make our particular programming and the cable TV really significantly improving it and make it very dynamic. And so we've asked her to be here because she'll be able to give you that presentation. And really, what we need to do is hire, most likely, an architect that has knowledge about cable and TV. And just about everything that's there from equipment rise, correct me if I'm wrong, Stan, would probably have to get tossed out. And we would go to a more high-definition programming and a better sound and everything else. And that's, so it kind of grew, but with having a million dollars, and we're not sure we need to spend all million, but we could do something significant. And with that introduction, you guys take it away.
Yeah. I was just, when council had this a couple times, the one time it wasn't voted on, the second time it was referred to a study session. So that's why I requested a study session. CM obviously can talk in detail what the vision is, but like the mayor said, we have $890,013 that is dedicated to PEG funds. It's just the PEG funds. In, in your pack you got from Public 202, if you look at that last page, that very last page, you can see the $890,000 right there. This last page is taken from the audit, where you see on assigned liabilities, $2 million. About halfway up, right here is $890,000. This is dedicated. This isn't like the budget...
Yeah, it's, the last page has the fund balances, and it says, roads, cable, PEG fees, $890,013 as of June 30th, 2018. It will grow because as we pay, those of us that have cable TV and pay our bill...
I didn't know where this was.
So this, this is the money that we're talking about. This money can only be used for equipment, studio upgrades. It can't be used for CM's salary, for Stan's salary, for anything else. For utilities, salary, I'm sorry, for, for, the small amount she charges us for all her great services. This is just dedicated for equipment. I'm trying to answer some budget questions, so it doesn't have to be CM, Chrissy, CM, Chrissy, because she'll go into the detail on what we're looking at. The other thing that council might be looking at, too, is there is a lot of money we get, a larger fund amount of money that we get every year, and that's from AT&amp;T, WOW, and Comcast. And that's in your actual budget that you pass. And that's under, it's like, I can give you account numbers if you want, but it's a little over a million dollars. And that's cable, Comcast, cable, WOW, cable, AT&amp;T. And that's used for other general government expenses. This is dedicated and can only be used for equipment. So this money can't be used for anything.
You said the million can be used to...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, Councilman Muscat?
Well, you know, and, you know, during budget seasons, we always see that cable, and we see it in general government.
Right.
And in 2015, it was $1,650,000.
That's separate.
Hang on.
Okay.
Nowhere in our budgets do we ever see restricted fund. So, out of that, $1,656,500, how do we separate the PEG funds from that?
It's not, that's not in that account.
Well, we never see in a budget the PEG funds.
You don't because the PEG funds...
It's a different fund.
Being restricted, we get a separate check from the three companies, and that goes right into the...
From my understanding, we get one check. And then how do you separate the PEG funds from that check?
No.
Now, I've done my research on this. We get one check. So how do we separate the PEG funds from this $1,135,000?
You don't. This million, right now, it's 1.1, actually. It's 62280 and 235. This right here is not the 890 right here that you get in your audit.
I'm talking for transparency reasons, we never get to see what funds we have that's restricted.
Well, you do. You do.
Hang on. Hang on. In our budget, when I see the budget, every April, it comes out, we get cable fund, cable and slash PEG funds. I can show you in the budget. And last year was, in 2015, was $1,650,000. And the expenditures was $97,606. This is right off the budget. These are not my numbers.
I've got it right here.
Okay. And if you look at it, it says cable slash PEG. Now, nowhere in that budget does it show us restricted funds. The only way I can see we have anything in restricted funds, if I look at the Plant Moran audit.
Okay, but first, I don't know where you're looking at, because right in the budget, it says cable, Comcast, cable, WOW, and cable, AT&amp;T.
Correct.
Not cable slash PEG.
Correct. So out of, so where does it show us restricted? Where does it show us, because that is...
It's not in there. It's a different fund. It's not in there.
So why can't we see it?
You can. It's in the audit. It's...
Correct. You gotta go hunting for this in the audit. So when I add up all the numbers over the years, we've collected $13,892,087.
That's more than that, but okay.
That's what we come up with. So how do we, as a council, decipher what we get for PEG? When all the budget tells us we received $13,892,000?
All the general fund budget is saying that.
Okay, so now, how, as a council member, do I know what PEG funds we have? If it's not...
It's in the audit. I mean...
Okay, it's in the audit, but it's not in the budget.
It should be in the budget.
What are we arguing about?
I'm talking about, I want to know where all the money is.
It's not gonna be in that money.
Because you're in the budget, it says what money we get from the cable funds.
There should be no PEG monies included in the budget because it's restricted.
That's correct. Correct.
But shouldn't you show restricted funds on your budget?
Not in the general fund budget. It's in the audit. The general fund budget is the general fund.
That's not being transparent at all.
Well, that's, you don't show the Act 345 budget either, or the water budget in the general fund budget.
Again, that's not being transparent to the residents.
That...
That this is money that the res, you can laugh all you want, but it's transparent.
I'm not laughing, you're not understanding.
Oh, I do understand.
It's here. It's right here.
What, you have that, but does the general public have it?
It's in the audit that you guys got last week and is published. Yes.
I understand that, but if you're not looking for it as a, as a normal citizen, I'll bet you 99 and 9/10ths percent of the normal citizen doesn't even look at that and doesn't even know where their money's going.
But we talk about it every year with the sanitation levy and the other levies. We talk about it.
I'll tell you what, this year, the first time since I've been up here or sitting at that audience, have I ever heard the word restricted funds for PEG funds? I've never, ever heard it.
I'm sorry that you haven't heard it.
And when, and when it came out in April that we needed $800-some-thousand to do, to rework the studio, we all looked at, wow, that's a lot of money. And then, at that time, Bob Ankramp was here, he brought us that number. And it was told, we can't afford it. We don't have any money for it. Then all of a sudden, three, two, three months later, we have $890,000 because the money was restricted. That's the first time I heard restricted funds. And that's when I started looking up this stuff, okay? And looking back in previous budgets and trying to figure out where all this restricted money goes and how you, how you do it. And I asked the question, what checks do we get? We get paid quarterly, one check, from all the cable companies. So how do you take that money and separate it into PEG funds?
If Linda was here, maybe she could help us.
Because there's no way in the world I'm gonna say that, you know, and we see fund...
Not in that number, though.
We have, and in the budget, we have fund, total expenses. And over, in 14 years, $1,447,095 that we spent out of that 13, almost $14 million. And if we spent that money on our studios, there's no way we'd be in that shape that we're in right now.
Councilman Adella?
So I just wanted to get a clarification. Do you have to answer them, or are you good?
I, I, I don't, I'm...
And what percentage do we get as PEG fund? What's the percentage we get for PEG fund?
1%.
The 1%?
Yeah, it's a 1% PEG.
That's something that we negotiate at 1%.
No.
The state changed the law and ordered the cable, the cable companies to give us this money, and it's restricted.
It's separate from the other.
I know, but I thought it was that 2% or...
No, 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 no. You have, you have your fees that you pay on your bill every month.
Correct. I see mine.
Yes. And you have that, and that goes into where you see these three. There's another little bit, that's the 1%. Like the mayor said, I don't even, I was alive, but it was in the 80s that this all came through.
Yeah, this is since day one, and the PEG fees were not included because they would've been inappropriate for the PEG fees, because they're not on anything but...
But equipment.
I'm just trying to figure out how we get to this position when I see all of this money coming in.
Call him where the 1% PEG, he's...
Let me, how many checks do we get from the PEG, from the cable companies? And how do we separate the PEG money from the, from the cable money?
Well, from the treasurer's office, we deposit all the money in, and I think that's a sort of type of accounting function, so I...
And the accountants.
Yeah, we don't...
So that's something that I need to know, how we're separating that, the money that we get from general government to PEG.
Yeah, well, ask Linda and find out.
Right, now that you ask that, I...
We have the treasurer here. They should know.
Because if we're, because there should be a lot more money in there.
No.
No.
While I'm looking at it.
No.
Because back, back in 19, or excuse me, 2002, 23, we had a balanced fund of $180,918 then. Okay? And then in the last 14 years, it's really grown a tremendous amount. And back in...
What budget are you looking at?
Our budget.
No, but, no, there's, are you looking at the general government?
Absolute, yes. But that's the only...
Okay, that's not the PEG.
That's the only budget I have. That's the only thing...
The audit would be...
But that's the only thing I get to look at, really, is when we do the budgets every year, I'm looking at that. I don't get the audit till after we approve the budget.
Okay.
Well, let, the...
And this is, this is a problem for me.
Well, let's deal with the PEG. When we get the controller here and we can talk about it, what we wanted to talk about today were the improvements that are needed at the cable.
Correct. And I pass this all out to everybody here, so everybody can see. These are true numbers from the city of Dearborn Heights budget. Nothing is made up here.
Okay. Councilman Adella, did you ask your question?
Councilman Adella...
And I'm just looking for transparency.
But...
Right, so I agree with Councilman Muscat in regards to, I mean, you mentioned we can't have it on the budget, and I understand, because it's not a part of the general fund. But at the same time, we could have it as an appendix, we could have it as an attachment so that us as council people can know what restricted funds there is. In this particular case, you got $890,000 right now coming in from PEG money. And you mentioned, I think every year, you know, a large figure comes in. Is that correct?
No. For the actual revenue stream that we use for other things, and the actual general fund budget.
Because I thought it was restricted.
That's not restricted. That's the numbers he's looking at.
The stuff PEG fees are the only-
Right, but today's, the, the PEG fees that we're looking at right now is eight hundred and ninety thousand, correct?
That's the-
That's not what's on that page, I don't know what's on that page.
No, that's not, correct, she's correct.
Okay.
The PEG fees are not, well, I don't know if the PEG fees are included because I still don't know how they're calculated.
Okay, 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 at this point, it doesn't even sound like we can move forward in discussing what we're going to do until we know the correct amount.
With all due respect, council chair, I just, just really quick, we were looking to have an architect come in and say, this is what it's going to cost to upgrade here and the, um, and the cable studio. We asked to go out for bids to get an architect to come in. At that point, I really think, in all honesty, we go out for bids, get an architect, the architect comes back, and the architect's going to be two thousand, the architect's going to be five thousand. At that point, I think you can discuss the other things. This is just a request to go out for bids to see how much it is and what we're going to do. Like, CM has more, CM has more details, but I-
I agree, I do agree, we can talk about what's going on.
If I understand correctly, Mr. Ankramp already did that. He's, he has done that?
No.
No.
No, we need your, um, council approval to go out for bids.
He had, he had researched it in the past, do you have that information?
No.
Didn't research anything.
Well, council chair?
I still have-
I mean, I, I don't think there's any loss in them going out for bids, I mean-
We've got Lisa here.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
First of all, I would like to hear what CM has to say.
Thank you.
And then I'd like to, you know, let's entertain and talk about going out for bids, I think that's fair and reasonable. But, I'm going to tell you, what I'd like to also request is when I'm, and I've mentioned this during the audit, or when we reviewed the audit, these restricted funds down here and what you see on the government funds balance sheet, those remaining leftover funds at the end of June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, and every single year, these are restricted funds. For example, you look at the PEG money, I think we need to go back through the years and talk about where we see that money going. There, and I was told there's, it's wrapped in, like, Act 345 is wrapped into the beginning for next year. We need actually see that, and I don't necessarily see that in line items. So that is going to be my request, Madam Chair, moving forward as a council, we need to review those numbers.
Absolutely.
The beginning, the ends, the beginning, the ends, and seeing exactly where that money's going. Because we don't, we see the end and there's balances there. There's half a million or more on several of these lines, and we need to see where that money goes. So with that being said, I would love to hear what CM has to say tonight, and then, that's all I have to say for now.
Okay.
And Chair?
Can I, so, I, I'm working with Martin because we have a call tomorrow with Standard and Poor's, and we need some questions answered, so I was talking to him about the PEG. So he said, in the PEG account, Linda gave him a schedule, so when you talk to the controller, there'll be more detail. But basically, the one percent from the cable revenues was about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The cable department costed about a hundred and ten thousand dollars to operate, which left about fifty thousand dollars to increase the PEG in this current year. And that's, you know, the schedule that he just showed me that they used to, you know, during the audit to show the increase in the PEG fees from one year to the next.
So we, we get an explanation, well, we can talk about what she wants, and that was not to derail this, not to derail this, it's for my information to see how the PEG money is calculated. Now, we can have another meeting on that, but we can continue, I agree, we continue with what you want to do.
Thanks.
We have to, because, I mean, what's the sense of being here if we're not going to go through this?
I, I would honestly, I'd appreciate that, because I, I, I can, any questions you have, we can get those answers. Again, they're restricted, we can't spend anything without coming to your approval anyway. So if you want to have a more detailed meeting in January, I-
Oh, I definitely want to have a, a meeting. I'm not going to let this one slide by.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome. Well, I guess my communication with you is, is more simple than what we, we just discussed. And, and what I was under the impression of, and still am, is that, again, these are restricted funds that can only be used for the studio. And given that these funds are available, and we are very much struggling in the studio to create some quality programming, and, to be quite honest, I mean, we get some really amazing individuals that come into our studio. I just interviewed our US Attorney for the Eastern District, the brand new one that came in. And, and I wanted to share this with you because this was an experience that I had. When he came in, you know, and, and we brought him into the room that we usually use, and then, into the studio, I thought, we have all these amazing people that are coming in, and there's so many different ideas that we can, we can actually implement for this particular studio. And having these funds, we really need to upstage our city in terms of Dearborn Heights, what we can offer, and the kind of communication system that we can, we can produce in the studio. So I really think that the sky's the limit in terms of the vision. And I had spoken, when, when Bob was here, we, you know, we, we talked a little bit, and I had given this, given him a vision of what we could do with the studio. And, and it does include a little bit of an expansion, so we can actually do live studio, live studio audience participation within that studio. Because right now, where everybody's on top of each other and trying to switch the staging, the mayor has the show there, you know, we do around town, we do community connection, we do off the cuff.
Chief chat.
Chief chat. So all those are, are wonderful programs that we do, and we also go, you know, on location as well. But trying to just keep up with all of that, and physically, you know, the three of us in there don't have the muscle to be able to do that.
I've got a question.
Sure.
In regards to expansion, how much are you going to expand it?
Well, we already have the one, the room that's ours, and we, we have the studio. And then there is the other, the other room that we, we discussed in possibly being able to expand. And I know Chrissy was working on that in regards to creating a, a new space to replace that space.
Now, this is at the Berwin Senior Center, right?
It's at the Berwin.
Because I'm very active there, and I know a lot of the seniors were concerned about the studio taking up their space, because they use that on a daily basis.
I think it was just the pool room.
And that's a very popular room for them.
Yeah, and it would be moved to the other corner where the Rotary and the old, um, the old drama club, and, and the Goodfellows have just for storage, so they're all willing to move that, so. They'd still have it, just be the other corner.
And we would never, ever, ever want to take room from them without creating a solution.
Well, you know, I have a thought, you know, we have a city-owned building, the police department has a lot of empty space, why are, if we're going to build a whole new studio, why don't we just relocate it?
I, we actually looked into that, because it's, um, it's, it's a newer facility. But the problem is, is to get people down there, they'd actually, it'd be the basement, and it's, you're right, it's the security to get them through and down, it, it wouldn't be as open to the public as, as the, um, Berwin Senior Center.
Well, speaking of-
You'd actually have to go through the PD where that one door is, and then you'd have to go down the elevators, and then you'd have to use the rooms in the basement.
So there's no rooms on the first or second floor available?
Not that large for that.
Nothing? Okay.
We, we did try to do as much research in terms of alternatives before coming with this.
It was just a suggestion, I just-
Yeah, absolutely, it was a good one, because we looked into it.
The old Comcast building right on, 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 we looked at that too, because that is an old studio and stuff, but those upgrades are actually worse, or, they're, they're older than our equipment.
Councilman Basie?
I mean, there should be like two proposals, one, to upgrade the equipment first, you know, before we even look at expansion, especially, I mean, for the study session, we're talking about issues we have with funding, increasing taxes, increasing water rates, and all that stuff. I think before we, my opinion, before we proceed with any huge funding like this here, I mean, I can understand we have to upgrade the equipment, the cameras, but to-
The problem with that would be that if we wanted to upgrade the equipment, you know, the, the, where we're going to upgrade it, and, and the design of where it's going to be would all depend on the entire design of the studio. So one thing is, is hooked to the other. And, and from one of my understanding, again, is this money is allocated exclusively for the studio and for upgrade of the studio, and I'm sure will be well under our budget.
It doesn't increase anybody's taxes, and those of us that have cable TV are already paying it. So what better use than the upgrade that when we watch this channel, we're watching in high definition and a better sound quality and picture?
Absolutely, you know, we, I had Etzel Ford, the second, on the show, and, you know, that's, that's, that's really nice to have him come into Dearborn Heights and, and want to be on our, our show. But our sound was so messed up that that show was not, you know, was, was not of quality. So those are the things, and then when we bring people in, you know, we, we want to be proud of our equipment, we want to be proud of our space, and we want to be able to say, you know, come into our green room. And, you know, having the live studio audiences, and, you know, having individuals as yourselves, you know, coming in, and having town hall meetings to be able to discuss things, and to ask questions, and to go back and forth, and really make it a mainstay and, and an area for communication. And transparency, basically, you know, a, a place where people can go and ask questions, and we can do something on a monthly basis, and, and even with the school board. And I think it's really important to be able to, to engage our, our community and our citizens in, in exactly what's going on.
I guess what, I guess-
Councilman Muscat?
It comes down to this for me, and, and what I'm a little upset about. We've been sitting on eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And for the past few years, that's all we've heard from citizens on how bad sound, on how cable was bad. And we've even been told, we can't buy, we have to buy parts from eBay for cameras, tapes that we have to re-tape over and over and over again. We've been sitting on eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars or thereabouts, and we haven't bought a thing? And now all of a sudden, somebody comes up, well, let's just redo the whole thing and spend all the money. That's what irritates me, when all along, we should have been going along and fixing this stuff, not buying parts off of eBay, and all of a sudden, now, let's go buy it all. That's what's upsetting to me.
Councilman Abella?
And this is not just-
Councilman, oh.
Three or four years now, five years, six years, we've been hearing complaints of people coming here to this room saying, I can't hear anything. The, the, the sound system, even at the city council meeting, was horrible. Now all of a sudden, we're going to do it. Why weren't we doing this little at a time as we go along? There's no question that it's going to get done. But again-
My prayers were answered, I don't know.
Okay, Council-
But we've always been told we don't have the money, that's what's upsetting to me.
One of the key components is we had a fresh set of eyes to look at it and take a fresh look at the whole operation.
I know Bob was asking the best, and he's been refused.
CM, and we got to do something.
But, I mean, you were the one, and people are doing the budgets, they, they have this. So somebody in the administration knew we had restricted funds, we knew we had the money. And yet, we always were told for five sec, we don't have the money, we don't have the money.
May I say something, you know, because of the, the, the sound quality and because of the quality of the, the visual aspect, you know, I, I did call the mayor one day, and I said, you know, can we, can we have lunch, because I'd like to talk? And, you know, we talked a little bit, and I actually gave him an idea of what my vision was in regards to wanting to change things, and maybe, you know, upgrading it, and, and definitely, you know, the equipment. And I know that he looked into it, came back and said, you know what, this is what we can do, and this is what we have available to do. Now whether, you know, I, I can't really address anything that you're, you're, you're talking about at this point. But that's where that started, in terms of, okay, now we have a plan, we have a vision, let's move forward with that, which sort of made sense, and then, and then the plan sort of moved forward.
Why couldn't we use these two rooms, and we could upgrade the city council room at the same time, and we just use the studio for city council work?
Because the, um, the clerk, they have that and they need that.
Because this room, this room is horrible, we might as well put this in the Smithsonian.
Councilman Muscat, we actually looked at that, and that's where I said when we, when it was brought forward.
Oh, I agree, I, I believe you did.
Well, no, no, but I'm telling you, that's why part of this would be, it's actually, it's not just upgrading this equipment, but getting a room separate for Standard and Angela to actually have cameras, stationary cameras, to have a better sound quality, and while the carpet might come out of a different budget, there is other things that would be coming out that would bring this up to the twentieth, twentieth century?
And we're a century behind.
We've got to wait another century.
We have, um, this room, we can't move, because I did look at that and think we could maybe move it a little, but with the new equipment, the new, um, the tabulators and everything that Walter has, it went from just a little area in the back where they need that whole room now. So it's not like we could allocate a different-
I'm just wondering, if we, we can find the space to do all of this at one time with this money, okay?
This would be, um, part of it would be for this, but most of it, it would be for this, this studio. And it, it would be like, CM, we're, we're looking for a state of the art. It was looked at, maybe about six or seven years ago, it was looked at, and it was like two million dollars or something ridiculous. I think with, CM actually talking to people she knows and her connections, it, it came into a much more reasonable number. And, and to actually have something that, that Dearborn Heights is ahead of the game, it, it'd be nice. It'd really be nice to have something that we can be proud of, like the mayor said, it's not tax-
No argument with me.
And if you want to have another meeting on the budgets and where all this, that's fine, but just to allow us, so we can put it back on the agenda, to go out for bid for architects, it's not for the project, it's just for an architect to come up.
I'm willing to do that, I'm willing to do that, but that's not, I'm not going to argue that point at all, because it's definitely neither.
We've got Councilman Abdella waiting here.
So, CM, just a couple of observations. First of all, I, I, I don't have Comcast Cable myself, and I happen to be at my parents' and they happen to have the council meeting on, boy, that's like from when I was like a little kid, Channel 20, due respect to Channel 20, it's pretty bad. I, I, because I always see it on YouTube when we get the emails, and at least it looks okay, but it's on YouTube.
It's a very-
Okay, but when you watch it on TV, because you guys had mentioned the quality's pretty bad, honestly, I didn't know how bad it was, until I was having lunch at my mom's, and we were flipping channels, like, whoa, this is like, really bad, really, it's like a black and white movie.
Terrific.
Yeah, so, it, it, the quality's definitely not there.
That's why I send the link to all my guests, I don't tell them to go on.
You send them the YouTube version, yeah, the YouTube version looks a lot better. But the, the, the second two observations that I've got is, the money's already there. I, I honestly, I agree with the Councilman Muscat, there's probably been some mistakes made in the past, but let's move forward right now.
Well, yeah, and I, I've got no, no problem.
So, since the money's there already, and it's not from us, and we can only use it for this, I would say let's do this, but more importantly, there's no harm in getting estimates done, none. So, let's get estimates down, find out if it's five hundred thousand, we could do this. If we find out it's eight million, it's a dead issue. But in all the three things, to me, it's a easy yes.
But we can, it's, you know, when you, when you say eight million, I know you're exaggerating, and two million may be out of the question, but we can do upgrades, we have the money to upgrade, and that's the frustrating part to me. We've had the money, and we've not done it. Somebody knew we had the money. Someone's going to tell me that they didn't, they didn't know about it, the budgets were made. Somebody made the budgets, so the money was there. That's what's frustrating to me.
I understand, and, and absolutely.
And I'm sure you're frustrated.
I, absolutely.
Okay, okay, at this point, we have-
I'm not saying, I'm not pointing a finger at-
Councilman, 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 at this point, we have Councilman Abdella and others that are waiting.
Okay, so, I mean, basically, I mean, it is still our, it's still our responsibility, as Councilman Muscat mentioned, that we have to even know, yeah, we know we have the money, but there's stuff that is in question, it still has to be answered, obviously. My question is, during the budget meeting, we discussed, we asked for additional money for the cameras. Where's the money? I, I don't have the budget in front of me, obviously, I don't know where, we're going to go back to it or refer to it, but what, what money was allocated for the cable or for the cameras back in the budget meeting?
We did, if we had this money, why have we taken it out of our budget?
So, that's something we need to look at as well.
One of the things I pride myself on, being a problem solver, when people came and told me this was a problem, we started to investigate, and we found out the PEG money was available.
So I think, I think the, the money was there, maybe the concept of moving forward and how, what we know, and that it needed to be done, was the catalyst to make sure that we both had-
Absolutely, I agree with a hundred percent.
And, and I, I think we're on the same page in regards to that, so I'm hoping to be able to move forward, and, you know, be able to, to have that vision for Dearborn Heights, because I think we, we actually went out and visited a few other stations and a few other cities, and, I mean, they, they definitely outshow us quite a bit, and I, I don't think that's fair. I think Dearborn Heights is, is an amazing place, and I think we, we should be able to, to show ourselves as that. And, and we do have the funds.
Okay.
And, and, and like the mayor said, and Chrissy said, you know, there's no tax issues, there's, there's nothing that people have to give up to do this.
Thank you, we have Councilman Wenzel now?
I have one quick question. Will the, any architectural fees or preliminary costs be covered under the restricted funds? We can use that for, do you have restricted funds for that?
Yeah, because it's part of the, you need an architect to design-
Yeah, I didn't think, I, I thought maybe it was just for actually equipment, but all costs related to this project would be taken from restricted funds.
Correct.
Okay, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
That was a really good question, because that was a question I was going to ask, it was about the consultant fees. If you can, do you have a projected cost on that, since it's been a while since it's come before us?
Well, under five thousand, we were initially at tops thirty-five hundred. I mean, it worth change, I mean, it hasn't changed that much, but, um, we do know basically what we want.
Any, any architect in mind?
I know that, um, CM, a couple, that was, um, looking at to get basic codes and stuff, um, I, I don't know their name, Deltryon, but, um, it, it wouldn't be something like a huge architect that we use for like the libraries or other thing. It'd be somebody that would more go in and design like a, a, a basic business.
Well, how about, you know, are you going to have somebody at least that's IT familiar, that knows how to wire it up for a studio, that's the big thing.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, that-
You can't just have a general contractor.
We have been talking to Tel Systems, which helped upgrade Westland.
Westland is good, I don't want to clear a picture, sorry.
Because there may be some, some people I could recommend through, through people that I know that's in the business.
We'd be very open to that, absolutely.
When we talked to Westland, they said that one of the problems that they had was that they went with a regular contractor who didn't know broadcasting, you know, equipment and such like that, whereas Tel Systems does this for a living, that's what.
And we wanted to make sure that those two were compatible in terms of the knowledge of a working studio and the design and moving forward.
If I can talk somebody into giving you something free, that is what I'd be working on. Somebody may owe me something.
I like that.
Okay.
And, and he's a relative of mine that I helped foot through school.
I, I guess I've got a question.
My son, who does this for a living.
I like it. We'll talk.
Okay, I guess I got a question, um, I've done a lot of construction, and I've done a lot of remodeling. I've never been charged for an estimate on what it would cost to do.
It's different, though.
This is a design.
They're designing it?
Yes. Yeah, it would have to be a design.
Yeah, because the, the thing that we need, and I was thinking, there's that one school that a lot of you broadcasters go to locally.
Spacauer, yeah.
And I thought, because you got to deal with the acoustics, you have to deal with the, the equipment being compatible, and that's all key components, and so when we, when we talked about it, I want to get somebody that that's their expertise. A guy who may build fancy homes might be the great thing, but we're not building a fancy home here, we're building a studio.
You want, you want somebody with some IT background and, 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 uh-
Yep, that's what I wanted to hear.
Studio production.
Councilman Abdella? Councilman Abdallah?
So, just curious, some like, just throwing it out there, some, something like Channel 7, Channel 4, Channel 2, et cetera, they continuously change their studios, obviously for them being so big, they want some, it's big and fancy schfancy. Maybe look into the possibility, maybe they could donate at some sort of tax deductible or something, maybe some, you know, some of their older studios. I'm sure they keep them or maybe they donate them or what have you, just as an option.
Well, that was, that was one of my bright ideas, but of course, Stan corrected me there saying that if we did that and we, we got different equipment, then the compatibility of that equipment with the equipment that.
No, I'm talking about the construction. I'm talking about the furniture and stuff.
Oh, the furniture?
The set.
The sets.
Just throwing it out there as an option.
Absolutely. We can definitely contact them.
What's surprising, when I went to four, seven, there's like a big room and there's like six or seven sets within. And so, it's dark, you don't see them on TV, but these sets are not that large. I, it's, it's amazing if you get a chance to go. Now, there's like a newsroom that all these people are screaming and hollering at each other and we've got to get this out for 5:30 and 6 o'clock and all that goes on. But the actual studios where you see the weatherman and the sports guy and stuff are not as big as this table. I'm amazed.
And they actually, their cameras are robots. There's nobody really in the studio. The cameras are just moving around and, and doing things and it's, it's really incredible. That's what you call.
So, Stan, you're going to get replaced by a robot on this thing? Okay. Okay. We need Stan.
And the nice thing is, is to have those sets. So, you know, Stan and Angela and I aren't trying to, you know, lift the, trying to, you know, get, get our set ready for shows.
Okay.
And the staff is really excited. I mean, Stan, you and I talked about things, you really, they really want it. All of you are so excited about it. I think this is going to work out really well.
The prospect of really putting us on the map in terms of that and, and programming is really, really exciting. And then we don't have to worry about inviting people to our studio and sort of being.
I know, it's pretty bad.
We can be happy and proud.
What's our next step here?
Okay, well, I think at this point, we're just, we're in agreement that we'll just put it on the agenda next Tuesday and.
Do you have the agenda done or are you able to add one more item?
It's already done. You can talk to Walt tomorrow.
Maybe we can do it in the next meeting after that then, because we have a pretty full agenda.
It is a very.
We do. I don't know, the next meeting after we'll add it on.
If there's a general consensus, would you have a problem if we just went out and solicited? We won't make.
No, we're going to vote at a meeting. So, it's on record.
But we can start preparing the RFQ. We just want to sign it out.
Okay. At this point, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to public comment. Please step up to the microphone, three-minute limit, name and address.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks for that. I'm going to get that.
I'm going to talk to him.
I'm going to talk to him.
We'll see what his schedule is like.
Good evening. Zahir Abdha, 354 Rosemary. And I hope you give me a little time because this is a very important issue to me, to the resident and to you. PAG means basically programming for education and government, meaning it is used to educate the public about our city, about our government, about what we do in general. That's what PAG means. And it is money collected from the resident of the city on their bill every month. It's 1%. It was allowed up to 2%, but our city negotiated apparently only 1%.
State mandated it.
Other, other cities have 2% around us.
That's the way it used to be and they made a uniform bill, Andy Dillon. Yeah. If you're under the old contract, but we're not.
Anyway, I have just a question and please don't mind me. Under what capacity you working with the city, CM?
Under what capacity?
Are you an employee with our city?
I work within the studio limits. And I will tell you, it costs me more money to be here.
I understand. I just need to know.
CM is the producer.
I just need to know if you're receiving salary, if you are.
On a minimum level. Finally, the last year, I think, but the last seven years, I was a volunteer.
I just need to know where your salary coming from. Is it coming from the PAG or coming from the franchise? The franchise is 5%. The mayor or the administration can spend it in the general budget the way they like. The 1% is very restricted specifically as they mentioned, for building, for equipment, no salaries, no benefit can be paid out of it. Now, Act 345 is restricted and it is mentioned in the budget. Why PAG is not mentioned like Act 345? It is mentioned in 2017, 2018 and Plant Moran has restricted and the amount is there. This year, 2018, 2019, it's not mentioned. It's mentioned under general fund from cables. And you guys can go back and read Plant Moran, you'll find what I'm saying. Before you spend any money, you need to know how much money we really collected and how we collected. What is the 1%? If the 5% is $1,065,000 approximately, 1% from the total revenue like the 5% comes to around $177,000 a year. If you go back, like my friend Dre mentioned, there was $180,000 in the fund in 2003, 2004 when the mayor took over. And if we calculate, there is more money in that fund, over $2.3 million, it's supposed to be there. I might be mistaken, but I urge you to go back to the budget which was submitted to the state by the administration. And if you go to see what are the expenses from the budget, which are allowed under PAG, they will not exceed $120,000. There is no new building. There is no new equipment. I was sitting here several times when Bob Ankrab said, I don't have money to buy tapes, I have to tape over the old tapes, that's why the audio was bad. All of a sudden, heaven sent the key with $890,000. I urge you, you're responsible for this money, to ask the controller. I asked John and the 1% was mentioned that we receive one check for the total amount. I did little calculation and I separated from the 1.65 million dollars, I divided it by the 6% to get six portion, I came up with 177. When I calculated everything, there is over $2 million, I believe, I might be wrong, mismanaged. I urge you to go back and look at it. If this money was mismanaged and used in the places where it shouldn't be, then your obligation to me as a resident and taxpayer, at least to do forensic audit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
To use a term like mismanagement without having any facts is a great distortion.
Okay, okay. At this point, we have another resident. Your name, address, and three minutes, please.
I don't, excuse me. My name is Steve Dopkowski. I don't know if I'm allowed to speak. I'm not a resident, I'm a visitor.
You're allowed.
I live in Dearborn. Right now, I'm a college student at Henry Ford. I went back to college in the culinary program. And I hear the banter going back and forth over this burning desire to spend $800,000, because you have it. One of the things you might want to consider is contacting Henry Ford College. They have a facility right here on Ann Arbor Trail. It's called Berry Center. They have excess space. You have Eaton Center in South Dearborn Heights. They have a lot of space. Don't be limited in your thinking. Think in a way that will help your community without just squandering this $800,000. But I think you should make use of the resources of Henry Ford College. Some, most people don't know, but they have a, a classroom that is wired for video, Full Kitchen. You could produce, you know, cooking programs right at Henry Ford College and show them on your system, it wouldn't cost you anything. And build a relationship with that school because there are a lot of students coming from this community going over there because they're my fellow students. But, excuse me, I would suggest, think in terms of Berry Center. You don't have to add on to this building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the audience?
Sure. Just because somebody's made a comment about the numbers don't lie. What you're talking about is 1% of that, John Riley got up here and said it was $160,000 a year. From that, the cable studio does use the operation. The rest of that money, which he said is about $50,000, goes into the restricted fund, which then can only be used for equipment. It's not added together every year.[1746.54]